All right, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, meeting of the Arroy Grande City Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seacrest.
Here.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Here.
Councilmember George.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnage.
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum.
Here. Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? I'll be thinking about water polo. Thank you. And would you join me in the flag salute? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That takes us to item five, agenda review. Tonight, we have for -- do we want to reorganize anything? All right. So we will proceed as published. Items five A, we have no closed session announcements. And for item five B, for brevity, I will move that all ordinances presented at the meeting shall be read in title only and all further readings be waived.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Could we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Ray Russum.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnage.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Yes.
All right. That takes us directly to item six A. This is an honorary proclamation recognizing Arroy Grande High School Water Polo Coach, Stephen Allen. Would you please meet me at the podium? This is an honorary proclamation recognizing Arroy Grande High School Water Polo Coach, Stephen Allen. Whereas Stephen Allen has been the head water polo coach for Arroy Grande High School since 1999, where he has created nothing short of an aquatic dynasty. And whereas Coach Allen coached both boys and girls water polo teams until 2017, elevating the programs to the highest levels of competition before focusing on girls' water polo. And whereas, under Coach Allen's leadership, the girls' water polo program has achieved four CIF divisional titles. And whereas, in 2021, the girls' water polo program achieved one CIF regional title, the highest title in the sport. And whereas, under Coach Allen's leadership, the Arroy Grande High School Girls' Water Polo Program has accomplished two hundreds consecutive league wins, twenty consecutive league championships, and twenty years of undefeated league plays. And whereas Coach Allen created the Arroy Grande Youth Polo Program to foster the love of the sport as well as develop young players prepared to compete at the high school level. And whereas, Arroy Grande Water Polo Program provides international travel opportunities for local youth to locations such as Croatia, Australia, and New Zealand. And whereas, Coach Allen, through the AGWP program, coaches and trains local athletes ages nine to 19 to compete in the Junior Olympics every summer. And whereas, numerous athletes have gone on to collegiate play, including to NCAA Division One programs. And whereas, athletic success has been proven to promote academic achievement, leadership, and personal skills that translate into lifelong success beyond the pool. And as such, Coach Allen has contributed to Arroy Grande in ways that extend far beyond the pool. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Karen Ray Russum, Mayor of the City of Arroy Grande, honor Stephen Allen and acknowledge his longtime service to Arroy Grande Youth Sports, his legendary 200th win for AGHS, and his commitment to fostering future leaders.
Thanks very much. Well, I want to thank the city council for honoring myself and really our team. It's really been many, many families, players, athletes. Everybody that has come through the program has really contributed to myself and my family. And I couldn't be happier with what has become of our program. It has really been a -- something we've never strived to try and win 200 straight or 20 years straight. We just tried to have good players and good athletes and good families and try and create good people for future portion of life. And I couldn't be happier with how the results of this have come. And I thank you very much for honoring myself and our team. So thank you, guys, very much.
Don't go anywhere, Coach. I think there's some people up here who'd like to say a few things to you, so if you don't mind staying there for a few moments. Sorry, man. I know. All right. To the crowd. Three out of five of us up here are water polo families, so I'm sure there are lots of things to say. So let us start to my right with Councilmember George.
Coach Allen, I don't even know where to begin. When I saw that it was 200 consecutive wins, I just knew we had to do something. It was time. It's time for us to recognize you on a very big scale. And this job doesn't have a ton of perks, but one of them is being able to do things like this today. You have personally touched our family in more ways than you know. You build and create confident children. And today is World Mental Health Day. I don't know if you guys know that, but you create positive mental health and you create a program that allows children to exercise and to be out in the sun and to learn how to eggbeater, which no one knew what that was until they all had to do it in water polo. You just raise confident kids who grow up to be confident adults and confident adults who grow up to be future coaches. And your reach, each one reach one, your reach just is exponential. And I feel like it's like the Kevin Bacon effect, where, you know, six degrees of separation. Someone knows you because of water polo.
Twenty years old.
Yeah, exactly. So, thank you. Thank you for all you do and just know that you have touched lots of families and you've helped create a beautiful community here. And we just, we thank you for that. Oh, and the Coach Steve slap on the side of the pool. Everyone knows that one.
All right. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Barnage.
Thank you. Just wanted to congratulate you, Steve. This is a really well-deserved honor, and I'm glad everyone showed up. You just never quite know who's going to show up when you give a proclamation, so this is pretty exciting. As Lon said, and the mayor said, that water polo families and I was, you know, when Maddie finally graduated and there was going to be no more water polo, it was seriously kind of depressing because we went to every single game, every single tournament. Huge water polo family. Some of my best girlfriends are directly water polo moms. And, you know, Maddie started in junior high, played through high school, coached for a little while after high school. And that experience of Arroy Grande High School would not have even been half as good if she hadn't played water polo. So it was a huge deal for our family, and you have a really positive environment that you coach within there. And I just, I mean, I could just talk for hours about it. So it was a wonderful six years, and congratulations.
So I know a lot of you in the audience this evening because our family is a water polo family as well. And I thought it was really important to write down some words tonight and get this right. I will probably, I'm already tearing up because it matters. I will tell you before I start, water polo made me who I am. Ladies, I want you sitting here. Okay. I can't see the words. Coach Allen's record of 200 straight consecutive league wins is incredible when measured against any coach in any sport and deserves recognition in these chambers. But his impact is bigger than that. He has been turning female athletes into tomorrow's leaders, and those ripples will be felt well past the pool deck. In a few short, just a few short years before Coach Allen began coaching girls' water polo and his Title IX was just beginning to really show progress, a powerful ad from Nike hit the airwaves. You might remember it. It was called "If You Let Me Play," and it was read by various young girls. Its transcript is a poem. It went like this. If you let me play sports, I will like myself more. I will have more self-confidence. If you let me play sports, I will be 60% less likely to get breast cancer. I will suffer less depression. If you let me play sports, I will be more likely to leave a man who beats me. I will be less likely to get pregnant before I want to. I will learn what it means to be strong. To be strong. To be strong. If you let me play sports. Coach Allen, you know there is chlorine in my veins. And I was a player too, as were my boys, and you know you have my utmost respect. But I've never looked you in the eye and told you these things directly. Because of you, these women will enter the workforce and family life and maybe even elected office, having the strength and fortitude and grace that only contact sports can teach. They know how to win and lose with dignity. They know how to set incremental goals and achieve them. They know how to work really hard. They know how to take a punch, and they know what it feels like to be champions. Thank you for everything you've done for these women and for our community by filling our town with athletes who are prepared to lead our community for generations to come. And ladies, you better do your coach proud. You go to the world and you conquer it. All right. I'm going to let you sit down because I'm going to guess that there's a few people who might want to come and say a few words. So relax for a moment, and I will go ahead and officially open up public comment. Would anyone like to come and speak? If you would, please do. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
I'm Kayla Sessina. I'm a senior captain on varsity.
I'm Berkeley Center. I'm a junior captain on varsity.
And we just wanted to say, on behalf of AG Water Polo, we are extremely grateful and honored to have Steve Allen as our coach. And to Allen, we wanted to thank you for the amount of hours that you put in helping us grow as athletes, but also humans. Thank you so much for the constant hard work and dedication to our team. And not to forget all the laughs that you brought us and also the slight fear that you put in us when you take off your hat and scratch your head.
Allen, you not only coached us to maintain our grit through the hard times, but also had to cooperate as a team of well-rounded individuals and had to work together even when the going gets rough. We greatly appreciate you, Slim Steve, and even though we want to cry during your hard workouts, or the slight embarrassment we feel every day walking into our first classes with wet hair or the smell of chlorine, we'll forever be grateful for you.
Don't be shy, everyone.
So I was really excited last week when Lon reached out to me. Was not on my radar at all, so it was super exciting. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Brandy Pasquini, and I'm currently the booster president at AGHS. I've been lucky enough to know Steve forever, probably more than 20 years, and we've worked side by side. And both of my kids went through his program, which is also super special, and one now is also coaching with both the youth and the high school program. So Steve has been a huge impact in our family. And I also have a niece and nephew who played, so lots of chlorine in our lives. But one thing that I want to talk to about Steve is how hard he works for the kids. And my biggest memory of that is during COVID. I will say from the day that the world shut down, Steve and I were on the phone pretty much every day with him coming up with a new plan of how we could get the kids back in the pool and at least outside doing something. And we worked hard, but Steve really pounded the pavement. And he was on the phone with the county every day, shooting emails, like, didn't let it go. And sure enough, by June, we had pretty much everybody back in the pool somehow, one per lane. We were there 12 hours a day, but we made it work. And that is all thanks to Steve. The girls' team wouldn't be where it is now if we had not been in the pool for that couple year period. But he showed that he was all in, and it was about the kids and just keeping them going with something that was positive in their life. So that's my moment.
Oh, I thought you were coming up, Spike. You always got to let the ref go first.
Well, before I was a ref, I was a water polo dad. I'm standing here to help remind the young people that are here and the parents that are here today. My son graduated in 2008. He was fortunate to be the captain of the water polo team under Steve in 2006 and 2007, his junior, senior years. My Latin son's now a PhD in geology. Some of his leadership, no doubt, was learned in the pool at Arroy Grande High School back in the days when one of the goals was in four feet of water and the other goal was in seven feet of water. Steve's legacy reaches far past and before the first of those 200 wins that these girls are enjoying and the program is enjoying today. Just a reminder that leadership is a unique quality, and Steve's a unique asset and treasure for our community. Thank you.
I took over the, or I came over to AG to take over the boys' swim team from Coach Allen. And since that day, my life has not been the same. And that's a credit to his mentorship, not just of athletes, but of his coaches. I've grown into a coach, a teacher, an educator, and that's thanks to his example, his role model. And now own his house as well. Bought a new one. So, yeah, pretty much everything I've got in my life today is from his example and his leadership. So greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So Eric Marsh, I have actually had the luxury of coaching Mayor Russum's kids. But let alone, Coach Allen has been a mentor for me since I was a little kid. My dad and Coach Allen started Central Coast Water Polo Club when I was a kid. And then, once I graduated through high school, Coach Allen changed it over to Arroy Grande Water Polo to focus on the high school team. And ever since that point, Coach Allen has been a driving force or a driving force in this community. And as you can tell, we have parents on the board here, the city council, that are water polo parents. And it shows here how many people respect what he's done for the community, let alone teaching these young ladies how to conquer the world. And I'm greatly appreciated that I have had the opportunity to come back and help coach with Coach Allen because his mentorship, along with my dad, has greatly made me who I am today. So thank you.
Well, I'm going to be a mess, sorry.
Just be sure that everybody's still speaking into the mic because I guarantee you there are players out of state, including from my family, who are watching and want to be able to hear you over the mic.
Hi, everyone out of state. I'm Kelsey Hitchens. I graduated in 2013, obviously played for Coach all four years, but I was lucky enough my freshman year in college to receive a call from him to ask to coach. So I've now been coaching with Coach for 10 years, so we have 15 years of history together. So I just can't thank you enough for being such a strong person in my life for that time. A lot of crazy things happened. And with Coach and Cameron, it has just been a constant support system. The pool deck is the safest place in the world to me. I love it dearly, and it's because of him. I know most of my teammates that I played with would say the same exact thing, where it was a place that we wanted to come every single day, no matter if we were fighting with each other, because that happened. But it was a safe space because of him and his wife, and it was fun to watch them get married, have children. Dorothy was born my senior year, and it was really special to get to be a part of that. And it's been incredible to be on your staff and just be in your world for the last 15 years. And there was a time where I thought I was going to move for a job, and this was the hardest goodbye was to Allen and to the team. Luckily, I got to stay, so that goodbye didn't have to happen. But I just couldn't be more grateful to be in this world and have gotten to sit on your bench for the last 15 years.
So I'm Miles Whitfield. I'm one of the few people that probably played against Steve at one point in time. So when he was at Lemoore High School. And then through all these different things, never knew him at that point, but then was able to start coaching youth with him. And, you know, one of the things that with my son is playing in college right now, he's been the biggest fan. And he's been there as a support for him. And then now, my daughter, who is a sophomore in the program as well, he's just the biggest supporter of them, and he really, truly does it for the love of the sport, which is something that I really appreciate. You know, it's a lot of hours out there where you're not making money, you're out there making kids love water polo. And that just, it breeds a mentality behind the whole program that is really, really special. And so those are the things that I think we see kids, they walk away from the sport where they're no longer playing, but almost all of them still love it. And when you spoke about how much you still love it, and I think that comes from coaches all throughout your life, and it's a really special thing for athletes and coaches. So thank you, Steve.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Andy Burnett, resident of Arroy Grande, and my daughter plays for Arroy Grande High School Water Polo Club. You know, everybody said great things about Coach, and they're all very, very true. We moved here five and a half years ago, and our daughter really didn't know anybody, didn't have a place in the community. She's going to kill me for saying all this, by the way, but it's appropriate. And then joined AG Water Polo and has just blossomed. And it's been such a great opportunity for her. But what's even more impressive than what she's become is just what the team is. And I can't speak about players that came before this group, but this group is special, and they're special because of Steve. Just a great group of girls, a reflection of the great leadership that Steve provides. You all are very, very correct in saying that he has a huge impact, not only on this community, but on the state and probably on the nation. I mean, you know, kids are going everywhere, that he's had an impact on. One thing that I don't know that has been said, and I think should be said, is thank you to his family, his daughters and his wife, for giving him to us, because that's literally what they do. And they do it with a smile on their face, and we appreciate that. So Steve, thank you for everything you do.
You got that, right, Ray?
No, I was a little late.
One more time. Anyone else? Please don't be shy. It's your one chance to say it in front of everybody.
We love you, Steve.
Going once? Going twice? All right. We will close public comment. And Steve, I hope, I know this is
Mayor Ray Russum? We do have some on Zoom.
Oh, thank you so much for reminding me. We've got an online portion here, too. All right. I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
Hey, if any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. For the caller, please press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, no raised hands.
You're off the hook, ma'am. Honestly, I'm so grateful to the last person who came and spoke. I don't know you, but that was so wise of you to thank the family. Because anybody who knows, nobody coaches for the money. We coach for the love of the sport. We coach for the love of the game. And it is a sacrifice, not only personal, but the family as well. So thank you to everyone. And ladies, I mean what I say. This sport, I am evidence. I didn't play girls' water polo. I played boys' water polo. But it's different when you get your own sport, and you've been given a gift by Coach Allen. Don't you dare waste it. You go out in that world, and you conquer this world, and you take everything you learned from him, and you take that off the pool deck and out into the world, and you make a difference, okay? All right. With that, we'll take a 10-minute break for pictures. All right. I don't see the feed anymore, though. Are we good? Okay. All right, everyone. Welcome back. We are moving forward now to item six B. This is interim city manager communications.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. And everyone left for my update. That's okay. We have some interesting and really great project updates for you. And then, so I'll have our interim, well, our, not yet, our city engineer at this point. Things are changing, but I'll ask Shannon to give an update on a few items, and then I'll wrap it up. But go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm happy to report on the progress and some projects that are going on currently. The first one is the Fair Oaks water line replacement. If you've noticed the traffic on road closed signs on Fair Oaks and Elm, that's because we've been replacing a 1929 water line. And so the Fair Oaks water line replacement project is just finishing up this week with some striping and some punch list items. The very exciting The very exciting concrete repair project in the village, night work is starting 8:00 tonight, so you might actually notice that on your way home. I'm hoping that they're set up in time for you to notice it on your way home. But that night work will occur for the next three to four weeks from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, Sunday night through Friday morning. And that's replacing the tile bands and the tree wells and the crosswalks with brick pavers. We're very excited about that. The picture that you see here is right in front of 191 Tally Ho. We're doing frontage improvements, and the wall has been bid out and awarded, and construction of that wall is scheduled to begin on October 23rd. We're also busy doing street repairs, so this shows all the street repairs that are scheduled to be done this year. Those that are in purple are places where we've done digouts. All of that work is complete. That's Mason, Nevada, Traffic, California, and Corbett Canyon. So all of those digouts are complete. We're currently up in the Equestrian neighborhood, where you see the, I guess that's reddish brown, and we finished up all the concrete work, and now we're in the midst of doing the actual paving, and that paving is scheduled to be done in that neighborhood on October 23rd. We just started with the initial ramp work on Via Vicaro, just off of Rancho Parkway, and that will be paved next. All of the areas in green is all part of the slurry seal project, and that won't be started until the end of the village work, because one of the streets that's being slurried is Branch, and we want to do the slurry after the crosswalk work is complete for a nice, clean finish. All right, we've also got the public safety camera project. This was originally scheduled to open today. However, we had a lot of interest in this project. We held a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting the Friday before last. Lots of interested potential bidders. We ended up with 34 questions, and so we wanted to give the potential bidders plenty of time to digest all of that new information, so we extended out the bid opening for one more week. So that is scheduled to open on October 17th with award hopefully in November and beginning of construction in December. And then the swinging bridge retrofit. This project received some federal funding, and as such, we needed to go through the process of getting federal environmental review. There are some last small remaining pieces to finish federalizing that project, at which point then we will put it out to bid, and based on the current schedule, that will go out to bid mid-November, which is good timing. There's a long leeway on some of the parts, and we can't get in to do it until May of next year anyway, so that will put us right in time to get that work done in spring, early summer of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. So that's kind of a wrap-up of a lot of the projects that we're working on. There's some more to come. We're obviously doing some work in Tally Ho Creek that we're going to be updating your council on at our next meeting. But I wanted to give you an update on our first community workshop. I wanted the public to know that we had a really productive workshop. Our planning or community development director, Brian Pedrati, is here. He can add any comments that I miss. But the purpose of the meeting was really to get the community engaged and get people to start to think about this process, this vision for our city, and then have some series of engagement activities that start that process going. So we had about 35 citizens, I should say, at the workshop. Just to touch on the activities, to get people interested and get the ideas going, is identifying where people work and their favorite places in our city, and they used a dot system to identify those on a map, on an aerial photo, and then what they love about this city. We want to know kind of what they love now, and, you know, what the challenges are that we're facing, and what they'd like to see in the future. So we're going to continue to do that. We're going to distill the information down that was received at this meeting, and we'll continue to update the council as we get that data and at subsequent workshops that we're having in the future. So that ends, actually, is there one more slide? Yes, sorry. Jessica put this slide together for me to allow me to talk about the app that we have for the City of Arroyo Grande. It's a mobile app. You can download it with the, what's that little thing called?
QR code.
The QR code, yes. And it's available for everyone. We'll be able to get complaints or positive information back in quickly so that we can respond to that, schedule those issues and resolve them, and we'll just be much more in touch with the community, and the community can be much more in touch with us. So we're looking forward to pushing that out and having a lot of engagement in this app that we have. And I can answer any questions you have, but that's the end of our update.
Any questions?
I don't have questions, just a comment. That app is amazing when you just need a phone number. It's so easy just to tap on it, and all the phone numbers from every department that you could possibly need are there, and I just think that's an amazing asset, so you should download the app.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to add, Jim and I were both at that meeting, the kickoff with the community for the general plan update, and from a teaching perspective, I went and marched right up to our consultants. They did a lesson plan that was right on target. It is really difficult when you ask people what do they want, because most people know what they don't want. They don't know how to get there, though. They don't know how to say what they want. And they did a great job of opening the communication and giving them prompts and allowing people to really open up their minds without having to look at a blank piece of paper. It was so well done. I'm really looking forward to the next few that are coming. That was just the beginning, but just based on what I saw, I couldn't be happier with the consultants, and we had a really nice turnout, and hopefully the online turnout will be as good. I want to be sure that people who are watching right now know that if you go to planaroyogrande.com, you can contribute to those same activities. You can do the activities at home. So if you were not there at that particular meeting, anybody who's watching right now or in the coming months, you can go ahead and take part in those activities from the comfort of your home. All right. Then that finishes our city manager's report, so that takes us to item 7, city council reports. We don't have those at this time. It will be the second council meeting of the month. So that takes us straight to item 8. This is community comments and suggestions. This is your chance to talk to us about items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the council, please come up to the front and keep your comments to three minutes or less and address the council as one body. So I'll go ahead and open up public comment.
It's always freezing. Hello, my name is Gia Powell. I realize you all support the extreme LGBTQ ideology, hanging their flag on city property, made that very clear. This action also seemed to be seen as an invitation for some to hang this flag in our school classrooms, a flag which, from many citizens' perspective, including mine, represents a grooming and pedophilia-related ideology that includes drag shows and LGBTQ-plus-related pornography in our schools, keeping secrets from parents and many times leading to children being given hormone blockers, sterilizing drugs, and mutilating surgeries by dishonorable doctors. The physical and psychological damage done to these poor confused children is irreversible and is not a magic pill. Just the opposite. These actions have destroyed hundreds of lives, including causing many to commit suicide. Even after I sent you this research and all the resources, you all continue to ignore this clear and present danger that threatens our way of life, destroys our values, strips parents of their rights, and most importantly devastates the health and well-being of our children. As stated before, this has nothing to do with anyone, an individual, being gay, lesbian, bisexual, et cetera. All adults have the right to live their lives as they see fit, as long as no one is breaking in law, but no child is born in the wrong body, nor should delusional adults be empowered to attempt to convince them as such. Thankfully, many organizations are helping to pass laws now, and over 19 states making the practice of indoctrination and sexualization of children, as well as drugging and performing barbaric surgeries on them illegal, like outlawing lobotomies that were once legal. Sadly, California's deranged leadership is doubling down on doing the opposite to accommodate their woke agenda at the expense of children and their parents. If you are wondering how this is even possible, follow the money. This practice is now a multi-billion dollar medical business model. After receiving this information, not one of you went to any of our schools to even attempt to discover if this type of insanity is right here in Arroyo Grande. I did. It is. To my horror, this apparent abhorrent ideology has infiltrated our schools. This is what I found. LGBTQ pornography, indoctrination literature, who will be hailed a cannibal? Exposing children to porn is a federal offense. Who will be, oh, this hysteria may be popular now, and children will pay the price, but thankfully, parents and local governments are winning lawsuits against those who are responsible or complicit. These are just a few of the pornographic and inappropriate books that were found at AG High School.
Thank you very much. You can continue at the next meeting.
Fortunately, the new principal was courageous enough to pull all those books, and they're under review with the school board. You guys should do your duty and obey your oath to the Constitution of the United States and stand up against this.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Just one question. Any word on when the Arroyo Grande app will be searchable? I attempted to search today, and it was easier with the search of Arroyo Grande, California, to find my singing monsters. I don't know one.
I'll have our city clerk comment on how to find it in just a moment. Would anyone else like to comment on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, so I'll close. Oh, we'll see if anybody online, thank you.
If any members of the public online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. For the caller, please press star nine. We have one raised hand. Casey, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Hi, I am Casey Collins. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My son is this thing. He is a freshman at AG High School. So what I just heard is concerning to me, and I would like to call the city to know how it's being dealt with. I will also add that I live on the mesa, and as far as crime goes and this goes, my van was stolen a month ago, so there's crime there. My children are in the district of Oceano, and there has been issues there as well. So as far as school oversight, I can say that I am not the only parent concerned with what is being taught in schools, how schools are being run, but I also don't exactly know where the bridge is at between AG and Oceano and our kiddos. So that's my concern, and I think that's where I'm going to leave it.
Hey, if any other members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. For the caller, please press star nine. Okay, there are no other raised hands.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment, and before we move on, let's see if you can maybe answer the question of how to search for that.
Okay, I can just ask a clarification. Do you mean searching for information on the app, or do you mean finding the app so that you can download it?
Finding the app, right? Search in the, I suppose like the right amount, so it's...
Please feel free, because that way people at home are maybe doing the same thing you are.
I mean, searching for the app in the Play Store.
Okay. Oh, for Google. So I do know from the developers that there were some issues at the beginning of loading and being searchable in the Google Play Store, but that has been resolved, they said, and they said you just searched City of Arroyo Grande. But if you still can't find it, we have a QR code that you can also scan, and it should take you right to it.
I've got the QR code, but do you know who I should follow up with?
Me.
Okay.
I can give you my information.
Jessica, do you have a card on you by any chance?
I probably do.
Okay, so we'll take care of that. And while they're doing that, and Alexandra, you can just kind of step around there, and she'll come to you right there. Just for those of you who are watching, there appears to be some confusion, so I want to just make sure that I can straighten this out. The City of Arroyo Grande has no oversight whatsoever to do with schools. That is under the jurisdiction of the state of California and under the jurisdiction of the school board. So to the caller and to the previous speaker who are upset with things that are happening within the schools, those are properly taken to the school board. Their meetings are on the same nights as our meetings. So if you want to know when those are, that's the second and fourth Tuesday of every month over at the school board chambers, which are on Orchard Avenue here in Arroyo Grande. In terms of the crime on the mesa and in Oceano, neither of those are within the city boundaries of the City of Arroyo Grande either. I would direct you to talk to either the District 3 or District 4 supervisors for the county of San Luis Obispo. That would be Dawn Ortiz Legg or Supervisor Jimmy Paulding. So not to pass the buck, but none of those are within our jurisdiction. So with that, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is tonight collectively, items 9A through 9I. Does anybody have anything, any questions or any that they'd like to pull for separate consideration? Okay, seeing no one, we will go ahead and open up public comment. If anyone has comment on items 9A through 9I, please come forward. And seeing no one in chambers, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. For the caller, please press star nine. Okay, there are no raised hands.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back around to the council for consideration and potential action.
Madam Mayor, I would move for approval of items 9A through 9I. Was there anything additional to read? No, okay, Isaac, you looked over at me. Okay, that's it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Proton Barnage?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Ressum?
Yes. Items 10 are public hearings, and 11 are old business. We have neither there, so that takes us straight to item 12, new business, and this is item 12A, discussion of a formula business, formula businesses in the Arroyo Grande Village. And Director Pedrati is coming up to the mic, has his PowerPoint ready to go.
I'm all set. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Brian Pedrati, Community Development Director, and tonight is a discussion of the formula businesses in the Arroyo Grande Village. So the purpose of tonight's study session is to provide the city council an opportunity to review and provide further direction regarding a potential ordinance revision to Section 16.04 of the municipal code. That's the definition sections, essentially, relating to formula businesses. So back in 2005, the city council received some public comments at a hearing expressing concern about formula or chain businesses. In March of 2005, the city council then directed staff to research alternatives and some ideas for regulating formula chain businesses. In April of that same year, the city council held a study session where there were expressed concerns regarding the proliferation of formula businesses and that they potentially detract from the character of architecturally distinct district and could cause startup independent retail businesses to be priced out of the village. So the city council requested staff to go to the planning commission and return, you know, go through the formal process, ordinance amendment process, and to return with an ordinance potentially prohibiting formula businesses. The planning commission recommended the most restrictive out of a few alternatives, and the city council adopted the planning commission recommended ordinance in August of 2005. And so what that ordinance did was prohibited formula businesses in the VCD, which is the village core, and then the village mixed use and historic overlay district. And it included a definition of formula businesses. So this is a map of the, the VCD and the VMU where the restrictions on formula businesses are occurring. One thing to note with the map, in the staff report versus this map, there was an error. The, the properties along Station Way are actually in the village mixed use, but not in the HCO, the historic co-overlay. So they actually don't, this formula business restriction currently does not apply to those. So that's, and that's shown on the paper map that, that I provided. So that's just one little difference there. So the different, the definition of formula business, which is in the staff report, but we can go through it. It means a business limited to retail trade uses and restaurants that is required by contractual or other arrangement to maintain standardized services in the same or similar name, trade name or trademark, which causes it to be substantially identical to six or more other establishments, regardless of ownership or location, in which satisfies one of the following two criteria. One, it has exterior design or architecture, signs, decor, or similar features in a style which is distinctive to and standardized among the chain or group. And secondly, so it's an or, it is a fast food restaurant. So a little bit of kind of summary of, of what this means. It includes retail trade and restaurant uses. It excludes other uses such as offices, hotels, or inns. This does allow the opportunity for local startup stores or restaurants. And there's a distinction between fast food restaurants. Where, where if there are more than six out there, straight up, they're prohibited. They, they qualify as a formula business in the village. Sit-down restaurants and retail. If there's more than six, they're prohibited unless the exterior design or architecture, signs, decor, or similar features in a style which is distinctive to and standardized among the chain or group exists. So there's a bit of a caveat in there for sit-down restaurants and retail. And going back in time a little, or sorry, going forward in time. In 2023, Rory's Artisanal Creamery provided an application. And at the time, when the city received the application, which is a new ice cream shop, it was in the village core. And they had other locations and so staff did some research and determined that there were five other locations. So it was not considered a formula business. But this spurred a conversation about sit-down restaurants. And on May 23rd of this year, as part of council communications, the council directed staff to review the definition and return with a study session to determine if changes were needed. So our definition essentially is inclusive of both retail and restaurants and is required by contractual other arrangement to maintain the standardized services, the same or similar name, trade name or trademark, which causes to be substantially identical to six or other establishments, regardless of ownership or location. Sorry, I have to keep reading that, but I think it's probably a good idea just to keep with the, with going forward with that. And then in addition, they must meet one of the following. So it's, it's kind of a secondary way of saying what was on the other slide. It is either a fast food restaurant or it has, it meets this other criteria regarding exterior designer architecture. And that sort of leaves open, I suppose, a scenario where a sit-down restaurant could come into the village and change, if they're not a fast food restaurant. So for instance, McDonald's could not come into the village. It has six or more, six or more establishments. It's a fast food restaurant. Something that is more of a sit-down restaurant, let's say Applebee's. Technically, they could come into the village if they were able to get out of that one criteria regarding the exterior designer architecture. And so that, I think, was the concern directed from the city council. As part of this research, staff looked at other ordinances that had, you know, some sort of formula business restriction. And the city of Sonoma was one that was, I would say, similar, but it did not distinguish between fast food and sit-down restaurants. The one thing that the city of Sonoma's did all, however, was include a more detailed list of the types of uses that are formula businesses. So they, they went a little deeper identifying particular types of retail that would qualify as a formula business, you know, a hardware store, et cetera, et cetera. And then they also included more detailed definitions of all of the, all of the separate sort of phrases and words that were in the definition of a formula business. So for instance, they had a definition for standardized array of services and what trademark meant. So that was sort of the big difference with city of Sonoma. The city of Ojai also had an ordinance that includes hotels in addition to retail and restaurants. And their definition was more flexible, I would say, to allow prohibition of, of uses. The city of Malibu had a similar definition to Sonoma. And through sort of litigation, came out with a definition that, with a big difference in that there's a 30% gross floor area caveat for that city. So given some of the direction from the city council, understanding that potentially there's a loophole, if you will, for sit-down restaurants and retail if they were able to do some sort of change to their exterior design or architecture. Staff has just put together a one potential revision, which really just takes out the, the ending two criteria. And really just identifies a formula business based on that initial wording regarding standardized services, trade name, trademark, and the six or more other establishments. So in terms of next steps, feedback from the city council will dictate the next steps. So some of the alternatives in the staff report, including identifying a preferred version and directing staff to proceed refining and presenting to the planning commission for recommendation hearing. The second is request that staff revise the draft ordinance language as directed. So what we have is that one potential revision. And, and then similarly go through planning commission for a recommendation hearing. Thirdly, don't direct staff to proceed with revisions at this time. Regardless, you know, whatever direction we get from council, our legal team will review any proposed revisions. It will go through the regular ordinance amendment process, including a planning commission recommendation. And so staff's recommendation is just to review the proposed ordinance, receive public comment, provide direction to staff, and then determine that the study session is not a project subject to CEQA because it has no potential to result in either a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right, let's see if we have questions. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Guthrie, do you have any questions of staff?
Well, just, just to follow up on the question I asked earlier. Some, you know, I actually was, this is one of my first votes on, well, big votes on council. And at that time, we did both the village mixed use and village core. I think partly because there, it was just kind of unknown where things were going. I was at that time very hesitant about including the village mixed use because it just spreads it out so far. And now looking at this, I can see that there are a number of little holes in here, if we will, of mostly, as pointed out, mostly where we have public, I'm sorry, public facility, properties that are not village mixed use because they're public facility, with a couple of exceptions. So I'm, I'm fine with the, the, well, okay, so my question is, is would we be able to take a look at this as part of our general plan and maybe, in my mind, maybe clean up some of what looks like village core that, that is, has some holes in it? And, you know, exactly why this, I think it's mostly because they were either newer properties or at that time undeveloped property. And maybe some of those can now be included back in or we can have some different kind of language in village core that can deal with new properties or vague, you know, undeveloped properties. So I, I, I'm, I'm fine if people want to do this right now. I don't have a strong intention to do it, but I do think we do want to look at this as part of the general plan and see if we could sort of tighten it up and loosen it up at the same time.
Yes, absolutely. That can certainly be part of the general plan update. We can take a look at the zoning. We could also take a look at formula businesses in general as part of that as well.
Councilmember George, any questions? Oh, did you have more?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was, that was a disguised comment, but you know, okay.
Question, if, if the main, and I wasn't here back when it was adopted. If the main reason is to maintain our character and our architectural style, why would we be limiting it to just food and not limit it to all businesses at our franchises?
That's a, that's a good question. I think that I, I can't go back and, and identify why those particular two were identified.
I'll bet you somebody over here can though.
If, if, if you want.
I mean, we've got the institutional memory here, Brian. We might as well use it.
As I remember it, we already had a bank involved because they were, they were going, so we, Bank of America would, would have now been a
Legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming. We had, we, we have a whole bunch of real estate and had at that time real estate offices. So if we extended it to that, that, that would be, that would be the only other franchise I can think of that, that you would, you, you would, you would have. And at that time, nobody wanted to make those all legally non-conforming, especially when we were extending it farther out.
So there is the.
I wouldn't say nobody. There were some people who might have.
Thank you. So there is a potential to move forward with that and make that change. And then my other question is, and I had sent an email to Isaac and I apologize for not wording this statement properly. But doing my research and being the little sleuth that I am, I just wanted to make sure that we, we as a city were protecting ourselves from liability and, and from legal discrimination cases. And one of the issues is, is it, can we just rest solely on the fact that we want to keep our village just looking this way and not allow businesses in? Or, and I cited the Coronado case. Or is there an opportunity to add a little bit more verbiage and say that we also want to protect our, our village business and allow a variety of, of diverse businesses to come in and not be inundated with, with chain stores?
And I can address that, Councilmember George. I would say firstly, there was a litigation out of the city of Coronado. There's an unpublished Court of Appeals case, so it's not citable authority. But the Court of Appeal did find in that case that, that city's sort of retail business, formula business limitation was constitutional. The challenge was that it discriminated against interstate commerce because it was sort of about out of state versus in-state. But having sort of a prohibition that's limited as the cities is and as contemplated, which is sort of limited to zones versus the whole city. I, I don't have overarching concerns that that's a constitutional issue. And certainly the city has broad police powers. And certainly any ordinance would be vetted by our office and include the appropriate findings with respect to the city's authority.
Okay, thank you. Those are my two questions.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. A couple of questions. So just going back to, because I remember that, that I was, I don't think I was on planning commission, but I was maybe on ARC or definitely a community activist at that point. I was over there in the audience. But I, and I remember the whole discussion about, you know, we had real estate companies that were chains. We had the B of A, but I'm still kind of confused why we couldn't just make them legal non-conforming. Do you remember why that was? Because we could have. We, we, they wouldn't have to move out or anything.
Well, I'm gonna say specifically, I think with the real estate offices, is that they were actually owned by members of our communities that were, that were running them. So we would have been telling them that you're, we, we want you out of the village. And, and nobody, at least, at least I didn't want to do that.
Okay, okay. But, okay, all right. So so I, I was under the assumption, after we had the discussion with the, with the ice cream shop, I was under the assumption from back then that there was a lot more things included that, that couldn't come in as far as a formula business. And so one of them was, I think I posed the question about Applebee's or Chili's. And it's like, if they changed their whole appearance right now, could they come in? If they said, okay, because we've seen the Starbucks in other towns where they don't even look like a Starbucks because they're in a very historic, you know, neighborhood. So could, right now, an Applebee's, a Chili's, if they changed the way they looked, come in and locate in the biz, in the village?
I think that the language provides an opening. I, you know, the, it had, it would have to be, I think in my, in my opinion, based on the language here, it'd have to be a fairly drastic change in terms of, you know, it's a design, architecture, signs, decor. That's not standardized at all. You know, signs is kind of wide open, I guess, in terms of, I mean, does that really mean they would need to change the, kind of how the, like if it was Applebee's, how that looks in terms of? I have seen, you know, there's an In-N-Out that staff had identified in Westlake, for instance, that was, had changed its whole sort of outward appearance. They still had their, their same In-N-Out sign. But they had gone as so far as to take away the, you know, the crossed palm trees.
Oh, they took away all the color. I've seen that one.
They took away.
It's all brown and beige.
It's rock and beige. So businesses could, could go a length, but.
If they weren't fast food. So because fast food has its own designation.
Sure.
Okay. And then, so then I was also a little bit confused with the retail. So there's retail and there's retail trade. So for instance, could Gap come into the village if they change their, you know, Gap clothing stores? Could they come in if they change their look?
Retail would be in the same boat or the same bucket as a sit-down restaurant.
A sit-down restaurants, okay. And then in the staff report on page 167, let me find that. So or maybe it's 166. No, 167, okay. So the paragraph sort of in the middle of the page that says, "Some other communities in California have regulations for formula businesses that appear more restrictive, which do not have an out for chains that are able to change their design, you know, architecture, et cetera." So I was reading this and I was thinking, okay, sure, that, that's kind of where I'm going is I don't think there should be an out. And so, but then it goes on further to explain for the city of Sonoma, all of the definition for the formula business points all back to the way it looks. So to me, it was kind of confusing because they're saying, you don't get an out. Like if you come in and you say, oh, we're going to change the way it looks or our signage or our colors, that doesn't mean you can come in, yet the definition defines a formula business being something that looks the same for this and this reason. So do you see what I'm saying, kind of? I tried to explain it to Isaac on the phone and to me, it's kind of contrary to, you can't come in just because you look different, but you're a formula business because you do look the same. Does that make sense?
Yes. And yeah, I don't know if.
I mean, this is Sonoma. This is. I mean, this is Sonoma. This isn't us. I mean, you're just, I mean, and I, I, so.
Yeah.
That's just maybe if it's the will of the council, we might have to kind of clean up our definitions. Because I feel like that would be confusing to someone who comes in, who wants to open up. And we say, you're defined as a formula business because of these things, but you also can't change your appearance. When that's the very, the very fact why they're saying they're a formula business.
Right.
So anyway.
Was that a question, Barnage?
Kind of. It was like, why? Why Sonoma? This is confusing. It's not really for Brian to question.
Perhaps we can do it better.
Yeah, anyway, okay.
And my intro paragraph may have been sort of confusing to set it up for those particular types of regulations, but.
Well, I don't know. I wasn't necessarily saying that. I was, I was thinking I was missing something because it's like, is it an out or is it not an out? So, okay. Those are all my very important questions at this point.
And I'm going to Councilwoman Seacrest last after me because she was stuck on a plane and all kinds of problems. And so I'm giving her a chance to, to get up to speed here. Planes, trains and automobiles, exactly. I have a few questions. First of all, you confused me when you said Gap could come in. Because I'm looking at page one sixty-six and it says a business limited to retail trade uses and restaurants. Wouldn't Gap be a retail trade use?
That's correct. So the way the definition is written, retail trade and restaurants are defined as formula businesses with the six caveat, but then also.
Oh, because the other two.
The only real one that has a, a true prohibition just on its face is a fast food restaurant.
Got it. Okay. So because it wouldn't meet A or B of the second set of criteria, then that's why Gap could come in.
Correct.
Or something like that. Got it. Okay. Thank you for that. I dug through the ordinance as it exists now and it says that it expressly, your staff report says expressly excludes other uses such as offices, hotels or inns. I couldn't find that. Can you show me where in the ordinance it's there? Because I want to, I want to massage it if it is. So I'm starting on page one seventy-two, ordinance number five seventy. I don't find an express prohibition.
I, I would agree. I think that's a kind of a, that's a poor choice of word in, in terms of expressly excludes. It really only identifies retail trade and restaurants as the actual uses.
So the offices, hotels and inns are not expressly excluded?
There's nothing in the code that says hotels and offices are, are expressly prohibited, are expressly.
Are they spoken to at all?
No.
Okay. All right. That, that's confusing to me. So I have some commentary, I think, which I'm not going to do. With regard to the city of Sonoma regulations. The way I read that, and maybe this is a question for Isaac, on page one sixty-seven. Where it says formula business, and this is, I realize this is not our wording, so I'm putting you on the spot here. Is hereby defined as, and then they give a list, and that's what Brian was talking about a few moments ago. In your estimation, based on that wording, would it be limited to that list? Because Brian said like hardware stores, but then I went through that and it doesn't say hardware stores. So, and I, and I'm not saying that Brian's wrong. I'm asking, so wait a minute, if it doesn't say that, could a formula hardware store come in under that ordinance as written?
So I would say generally, my, my initial read of Sonoma's ordinance is that the definition is limited to those businesses because there's not a clause that you would generally see if you were more inclusive that would say formula business is hereby defined as, but not limited to. And so I think what Sonoma is doing, although can't speak obviously for that jurisdiction, but I think they, they have specified in quite a bit of detail which businesses specifically are subject to the limitation. And, and at least from my review right now, I don't see sort of that language that would suggest it's all encompassing. And those are just examples. It looks as if those are the specific businesses that are precluded under their definition.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, the rest of my notes are comments. So Councilmember Seacrest, do you have questions?
Give it a try. Thank you. So this is actually a question for Isaac. So as Mayor was just asking and referring to the, the way that Sonoma addressed it. Can we actually create a specific list like that? Is there, is there any legal problem with that?
I would say that for some of the same reasons addressed, sort of in response to councilmember George's concern. I think this sort of prohibition and the level of detail permitted within sort of a limitation on formula businesses is permissible, even if it's specific, because we're talking about a specific two zones in the city. We're, we're not sort of precluding these businesses from other commercial zones. And so I think the, the purpose and sort of the intent that councilmember George was asking about sort of earlier in terms of the rationale for why the city may want to boost sort of local small businesses as opposed to a specified group of businesses that qualifies for formula businesses is a permissible, you know, opportunity for the city under the police power. And so I don't see an issue, again, sort of not being involved with Sonoma's crafting of the ordinance, but I, I don't see a large issue with the way they've structured it in the sense that these sort of prohibitions are limited in scope. And they don't sort of preclude the ability to have a commercial use in a, in a broader sort of jurisdictional bounds of the, of the agency.
Okay.
So it was a long answer to say, I think it's permissible the way they've done it.
Thank you. No, that's great. And then I don't know if this is an appropriate question or not, but how do you designate a business legal non-conforming and what does that actually result in?
So it's been a, it's been a little while, but the way I would think about a legal non-conforming use would be that after a certain time, the city took action so that there's an existing use in effect. That could be anything. And then the city obviously retains a, a broad land use authority and police power. So say the city takes action to prohibit a business or, or moving forward. So at that date forward, they do something that sort of changes the opportunities for that use that's existing. A legal non-conforming use is sort of grandfathered in. I think we had a conversation, I know there was a more limited set of council members, but I think we had a conversation on legal non-conforming use relative to discussions about home state permits and, and short-term rentals where the, the discussion was about the city's broad authority to put new regulations in place. And then how you deal with existing uses that were permitted under the code that was in effect at the time. And so there, there's more nuance to it than that, but that's sort of the broad, the broad way to think about a legal non-conforming use. At least that's how I broadly think about it.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. That's what I was thinking, but I also thought maybe members of the public might appreciate a little more clarity. So thank you very much. That's all I had.
I have a follow-up to that and I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So if we were to come back and do a, a, create something that would, would create legal non-conforming uses in the village right now. The simplistic understanding I have is that as an example, if, if business A is legal non-conforming and that business leaves that location, goes out of business, then that basically eliminates the legal non-conforming use. Someone else coming in could not do that same business there and it would just kind of revert to today's rules.
I would say broadly, yes, there, there can be some nuance there. I think depending on sort of very fact-specific analysis of this, of the business in question. And of course, if the code speaks to anything relative to say an amortization period. So if there's a, there might be a, a runway by which a business has an opportunity even after it vacates supremacies. It may depend on, fact-specific on any entitlements they've been issued. So if they, they have a conditional use permit on the site, that, that's a legal non-conforming use that could conceivably run with the land after that tenant has vacated. So there are some fact-specific factors that may play into that, but Mayor, I think broadly, that's a, that's an appropriate sort of reading of how it may, may work.
And in what, in what condition would one of, and, and let's just use as an example, the proliferation of real estate businesses that have national monikers that are in a village now that were not all here at that time. Do they have CUPs for that use?
I, I can't say that. It would be before sort of my time with the city. I don't necessarily.
That wouldn't be typical, would it?
Yeah, I, I would say it wouldn't be typical because that would mean they would have received approval for a conditional use. And if it's a commercial property that's allowed in this zone, then yes, it's unlikely that it would require a conditional use permit unless there was something very specific in our code that would require it.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Any other follow-up questions?
I'm still just trying clarification on the include and exclude. The, the way I read it, if it's not included, and in this case, we include restaurants and retail, then it's excluded, whether it says it or not.
I think that's true and maybe that's, it would have been better worded inside the staff report. But I, I'm going to the, the mayor's question about expressly excluded.
If, if I come in and I have a, a, a chain real estate, I have every reason to believe that I can open it because I'm not, I'm not a restaurant. So.
I was just referring to staff's wording that said expressly excluded. I didn't see it. Right. I understood. I just didn't see that expressly pulled out in the ordinance somewhere. Okay, so I think we got our questions answered. So let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to come forward on item twelve A? Please do so now.
Just one comment about changing the appearance of a business. I know there are, there have been some instances in my life, I'm thinking of a Starbucks located inside of a bookstore, where I was going to a business and didn't realize until afterwards where I had been going. So I would sort of be in favor of removing that changer, change your appearance loophole. Because while it might not technically be trickery, it does wind up feeling a little bit like it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll check in with city clerk. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands. All right. We will close public comment, bring this back to the council and I expect substantial discussion. Who would like to kick that off? All right. Well, you got, you got pushed forward just now, Mayor Protem, just so you know.
She asked for the items, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I, yeah, I think I was one of the ones that wanted to have the discussion. What?
Kate's like, I can be super unsubstantial.
So I definitely think that in my mind, we need to clear this up, clear the confusion. I'm, I was really surprised how this was all written when I actually looked at it. Because when I sat in the audience a million years ago, I felt like it was pretty clear. And I didn't have a grasp on what really is allowed or is not allowed all this time. So I'm glad that we, you know, there wasn't someone who came forward that said, oh, I know I can have one if I just do this and this. And then we'd kind of be caught. So, so thanks to staff and the council for bringing this forward. I might want to be clear to the, to an applicant so that they know right away, more or less, if they're expressly, you know, can't come into the village. The, the discussion back then was there were people that were worried about limiting, you know, chilling business, limiting business. But we said, you know, you have the whole rest of Arroyo Grande. There's plenty of space in Arroyo Grande for you to open your Gap, your Applebee's, your Starbucks. And so, and to me, what I really want to focus on is not just the, what it looks like. Because to me, yes, that's important, but to me, what's more important is impacting a small business. So you have a Starbucks come in and they change their appearance. I know they can't because it's fast food. But even like I was thinking, what was the other one I was just thinking about? Like Supercuts. And we have, you know, we do have a lot of, you know, people that cut hair in the village and they're, they're not chains. And Supercuts could come in and change their appearance and, and it might impact these small mom and pop businesses, these small town businesses. So I feel like it gives the small town businesses the, an upper hand in just this small area of the village. For, so to me, it's definitely equal that we help support sort of a safe space for them to come in and, and look. Our, our, our village is completely thriving. It would be completely different if we had Starbucks, Supercuts, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, it's the historic atmosphere, but more than that, I just feel like it is trying to, trying to promote unique businesses in a safe space in the village. And also it's the architectural part of it. So however we craft, if it's the will of the council, I don't want to focus so much on the architecture part of it because I just want to make sure that, that people know you can't, even if it's, you can't just change your appearance and, and make it look like, you know, another business that it's not. And then also I, I do think that we need to talk about the different. To me, formula business is a formula business, whether it's a bank or a real estate company or Applebee's or whatever. I think that one formula business should not be allowed if, if the others aren't. So I, I, I do want to have some discussion about that. And I think that legal non-conforming is fine. Like I think the mayor said that there were lots of real estate companies that are here now that are, that are formula businesses that weren't back then. And if we would have put it into effect with the, with the ban on the real estate companies, we'd have maybe some independent real estate companies and not just the chains. So I'm, I like what staff has come up as far as a, a suggestion. And I like Sonoma. I think that that's a good place to go. And so anyway, interested to hear what the rest of the council thinks. Thank you.
All right. Your mic's on, Mr. Guthrie?
I am going next. Okay. Well. So I, I guess I, I, I understand what you're saying about, at least as far as the village core goes. And that was the thing, some of the thinking at that time that we would. We, we had a brand. That's the way I put it. We have a brand here in the village and that brand is not a factory outlet. You know, it's kind of the opposite of the factory outlet. I, I'm a little bit hesitant here about, about expanding it beyond this. I, I'm not happy that there's a, there's a bunch of real estate offices that don't produce sales tax or do any of those kinds of things or, or really contribute to the, to tourists. But I do think that there are, for instance, some retail businesses that I think we'll start to see that are small chains, that are, that are going to be possibilities for, for filling some of these holes, particularly in the outer areas. When you get down to Village Center, down, down at that end, or some of the undeveloped properties going out east. So I, I actually think staff approach of just eliminating the two definitions was enough for me. Keep it simple. I would be hesitant about when you start making specific lists that you miss one. Or, you know, you, or, or you circle one, you know. So I, I kind of like the simpler approach. I. So, so I'm okay with that for, for the village core and at this point for even the expanded areas. But I, I would want to take a look at whether we couldn't find a way of opening some, some, some other parts of the village up because there are, of, of the more general village area outside of the core sometime in the future. Because we, we do have, the village is, is doing really well, but there are, there's vacant space. And there's more vacant space coming. So and then it's been very hard to fill spaces in, in the village for the last couple of years. So those are my comments.
Okay. Councilmember George, are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Councilmember Guthrie. I agree with most of your comments. I'll just start with the basics. I, I don't like the number six. I just feel like that's extreme.
Too round?
Extremely restricting. It's my favorite number. Six people in my family growing up, but it, it's just. I think that there are unique, small businesses that would fit nicely in our village that would meet all of our criteria that may have more than six stores because. That may have more than six stores because they're just doing an excellent job of branding and cultivating their business. In their community. So I would like to have a discussion about whether or not we can increase that number. Not saying it has to be twenty or thirty, but even ten would be better than six. Um, so that would be my first uh, comment. My second comment is I. I agree that we shouldn't list every single type of business because then it's really hard. I think being broader is better. However, I I think it should expand past just. Food and retail. Um, not that I have anything against our insurance companies, our real estate companies. Um, anything else that, that is franchised, that's in, that's currently here. But if we're putting that qualification on another business, you can't come in because your logo. Matches all the other logos of your franchise, but then we allow. A real estate company or insurance company to come in with a logo that matches the rest of all the other franchise logos. And we're really contradicting what we're saying is the true intent of why we are creating this uh, ordinance to begin with. So I would like to find a way to broaden the spectrum without being so specific that we shoot ourselves in the foot. Um, I do agree with Councilwoman Guthrie, the landscape of real estate, uh, of, of real estate and retail has changed drastically. More and more malls are being converted into other things because brick and mortar is just a dying breed. So we need to be very cautious in that um, we have. Property owners who own. Spaces here who rely on the rent that they get from renting out their space. And if our restrictions are so tight that they're unable to rent their space. Then we're hurting the same residents we're trying to protect. So. I don't think we're doing that right now. I just want to be cautious that we don't get so strict down the line that we lose track of the fact that. More and more people are choosing not to have a storefront and so it's very hard. Like getting Rory's in here to replace Doc Bernstein's. As an ice cream parlor was amazing. I was so surprised that we were able to do that and do it so quickly. And yes, they're growing, I think they're up to eight, but by no means would anyone walk by Rory's and be like, that's a chain. And I think they're gonna grow even more and Isaac and I talked about it, McConnell's same thing. These are, these are, I I, it's almost like it's a different category of, of chain franchise. It's, it's like a. It's like when the artisanal beers became a thing, right? So it was, used to be like Budweiser and Coors, I don't drink beer, so I don't know. But then all of a sudden, we have all these craft beers coming down and I feel like that's the way the specialty retail stores. That we want to attract are going to be. They may, they need the funding of being, of having multiple locations. Because then you're buying in bulk, you get better prices, but they, they maintain that, that unique individual feel. Where you don't realize that you're in a chain. Um, while Flower Women, they do an excellent job of that and they're growing. Um, it's a women's clothing store. But um, so I would like to, to see us. Loosen up a little bit, like go back to the number six, cause I, it's not that it's round, it's that it's restricting. Um, legal, legal nonconforming, I'm not a lawyer, but I like the way that sounds. So I, my thing is grandfathering in, grandfathered in, if you're already here, you're safe, but no, no more, no more new ones. Um, that would be my layman's term. Um, let's see. I read through the ordinance and it referenced economic development policy. Uh, my question is, and and this is to council, are we remiss by making changes now? Versus waiting until our general plan is revised? So then we really know what that vision and what this, the community wants before we. Um, make these changes. Cause then we make these changes, then we go through the general plan. And maybe, I have no idea, I have no idea what the residents are gonna want. It may be completely different, so then we would have to go back again and look at this again. Maybe we wouldn't. So just, just food for thought on whether or not to do it now or to pause and wait. And revisit it, cause it's not horrible. We had it all this time, revisit it. Um, after the general plan is, is complete. And those are my initial comments, um, unless I, something else comes up. Thank you.
Councilmember Secret, member secret, would you like to go next or after me?
Um, can I go next?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I do, okay, good job, alright. Um, I think that all the uh, council people, council members' comments are well taken. Um, and I don't have a ton to add. It's really more emphasizing what I agree with. But I do think we sort of have a, not a conundrum, but how do you balance? Filling in where we need to fill in and not restricting business when we all need it and, and for sure the city core needs it. But I, I think of some nightmare scenarios when uh, council member George says more than six. Cause there's certain businesses where I would, where it's, it feels like it would not be what we would want. But a- all good points that you make, that there's a, there's some very nice, um, probably appropriate. They're not chains, but uh, retail businesses that have multiple um, stores that could be great for us. So as we're talking about all this, I think I would come down in favor of waiting until we hear more from the public. Because uh, how do we decide some of this? I'm not really sure. Um, I do think it's really important as um, can, uh, Mayor Protem stated that the language should be as clear as possible. I feel very concerned that we should focus on the actual business uh, that's being run and and not so much the signage. Um, and for example, I'm not anti Starbucks. I love Starbucks, kid loves Starbucks. But I would be quite alarmed if a Starbucks somehow was in the village because we have some great independent family owned coffee shops that would be. I think it'd be horrible to have a Starbucks next door, cause that's just not what we're doing in there. You know, they would take so much business. Um, when council members were speaking about grandfathering in, I think you're talking about real estate offices? Not sure. Um, but that, seems like that might be a good idea uh, with the comments about real estate and how many uh, national. Offices of national brands that we have. And I'll submit it. Thank you.
Okay, um. So we're kind of all over the place, aren't we? So I'm gonna try and um, harness us a little bit. So first of all, just um, I'll state right out the gate, I am for do some, doing something and I'm for doing something now. And here's why. We have spent decades cultivating what you're calling a brand. But we spend two hundred thousand dollars a year to market Arroyo Grande and that is based on the village. That is not based on Walmart. That's not based on uh, West Grand. That's based on East Branch and the beginnings of West Branch. And so this corridor matters and it matters deeply. And I was as dumbfounded as Mayor Protem was. In seeing that there are gaping holes in the ordinance we have now and I did not realize how gaping they were. Until we took a, a quick look at Rory's. Not that anybody had any problem with Rory's, that wasn't the problem. The problem was that it revealed other holes that, that they didn't have anything to do with. Um, so as an example, I remember when this came through, I was not on, I I was. Not sitting with Councilmember Barnage, but I was not a decision maker at that time and I remember when that was coming through. And then all of a sudden, it seemed like just within a couple of years, a whole bunch of like businesses, there were all real estate offices. All came in, they all had big giant national uh, monikers on them. And I thought, how is that possible? Don't we have an ordinance? And I didn't realize the nuance of what I'd brought up at the beginning in my questions, that it didn't. It, it met the formula business on the front end, but not those two caveats on the back end. And that's a really complicated thing and it created this big hole and it's already been driven through. And it's been revealed to us, we're not gonna have a general plan done for three years. I am not willing to put this off for three years. The, the, the image of the village matters. Now what we do is up for debate, but I do think it's important that we do it now. So in listening to everybody, I want to start with the, the number. I had the same reaction that you did. Um, it's always been six, I never really thought much about it. But when we looked at the comparative ones, both, uh, all of them had ten as their starting number. I don't know what the sweet spot would be. I would be perfectly fine with ten. But if we're, we, we are gonna re-massage this and, and not do the ordinance that is provided for us here, then it doesn't. Matter that we send staff back. I would task staff with. I think the easy thing to do would just simply be pick up the phone, call Sonoma and ask them. Has ten, you know, where do, how do you feel? What's your experience with having ten? And what, you know, what's our experience with six and what's Malibu's experience with ten? I think they all had ten. Um, and maybe see if we can find what is that sweet spot, because I think that really is a, a, a critical. Key to what we're doing, cause it's easy to prohibit things. The trick is avoiding the unintended consequence. And that's where we really need to put the rubber to the road. So I'm thinking of, you know, you mentioned uh, Wildflower, right? And I'm thinking of. Not to diss Rory's, but Salt and Straw is my favorite ice cream place in the whole world. And I don't know how many they have, it'd be a small amount, but um, you know, there's all kinds of those that are in that in between that, that. That, that would come uh, and and not, and and still contribute to what we're trying to do downtown. And in terms of the legal nonconforming, and I don't mean to pick on our real estate offices. I love all our realtors, they're helping us do these jobs. These are great people. They can stay as long as their business is here. I have no problem with that. So I don't mean to be picking on them. However, they don't, I, I think Councilmember Guthrie. Maybe unintentionally pointed at that, one of our top ten goals, which is economic development. And we don't get any economic development out of that. And so there is, if, if we were to change this right now. We are speaking directly to a top ten goal. So when we're asking staff to come back and do this and take valuable staff time right now. And, and are we gonna do this now or are we gonna wait to the general plan? This is a top ten goal. We need to do it now. And that doesn't mean we're gonna get that turnover right away. It might be five years. It might be until some of them retire and that's okay. We want them here, our local people, it's great. But over time, that's gonna begin to backfill that hole that, that was unintentionally created. Back in two thousand and five or whatever year that was. So, um. I would be in favor of something very similar to Sonoma's, but with added language like uh, Isaac was talking about. Because their language limits to that particular list and I wouldn't want to do that. I would want to leave it more, even more general than that, uh, you know, um. Like this, ours says, retail trade uses, except for Gap could come in because it doesn't meet that second set. We could say, I want it to say service as well. Because I think that matters. Um, you know, start, uh, not service, uh, uh, Supercuts is a service. I don't want it downtown. We've got great. I, I want to protect our local people here and they're, they're very well high traffic down here. So that's great. And it brings people down here to shop for the day, to come eat for the day. That's what we want people to be doing. Um. Uh, let's see. Think I got most of what I wanted to say. Um. I would also like to throw out there, and I don't know if right now is the right time, but I want to put it on the council's radar. We have some pretty serious holes in our sign ordinance and what's going on here in the village too, in terms of neon signs in the, in the uh. Storefronts. And so I don't know that that is addressed through this or through the sign ordinance. It's probably more of a sign ordinance thing. But we've got a pretty serious problem, I think, with that. And I'd like to kind of throw that out there as a, as a oomph. We could do something uh, about that going forward. So. Councilmember George, do you wanna, I, I know I answered some of yours. I think I answered some of yours. Uh, Councilmember Guthrie, I'm just not sure I agree with you, although, oh, forgive me, I do have something to say about what you said. Um, with the map. Um, I am fine with what you said about um, for. If, if those of you at home, hopefully you can still see the map that's up there. We can see it. Um, where you've got the yellow and blue, I like the orange and the colors, thank you. Um, of making a more restrictive. Ordinance but for the yellow only. And so that it didn't extend to the blue. Because in, in essence, what we're trying to do is preserve the walkability and the shopability of our downtown and the look and the feel. And the, and the, and the tourism aspect of that. And really you get a couple blocks away and I don't think that applies anymore.
Yeah, I, I. And I appreciate that. And that, that's my key thing is that, that it, is, is that we want to be. We, we, we want to be in this area, not just in the core, but that, that people would come to this area. We, we don't want to push all the real estate offices, you know, on, on, on the Grand Avenue. That they, they have places where they can operate, where a doctor can operate, where um. I was gonna suggest just that we might simplify this for staff by taking part of their approach, which is eliminating those two things. Add services and change it to ten. And then that would, that would, I think, meet everybody's desires here. We would, we, 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 we would not have proliferation of real estate offices or, or hair cutting. Or we, we get to the ten we want and we would eliminate this loophole that, that I think was really intended. Just to protect coffee shops, but I'll just say that. At that time, I think there was a coffee shot chain, Nautical Bean was right around six. So. So at any rate, that would simplify for staff. When we come back after the general plan, we could look, we, we'll see how, how that works. I will point out that in twenty years, there really is only real estate offices that have been a problem. I can't think, it only comes up because, because of Rory's, but to think about it, when, when did we ever really, other than real estate offices. You know, proliferating, in, independent, whether they were formula or not. But what other issue do you think we've, we've, we've confronted in the village in twenty years?
Isaac, would that, uh, uh, forgive me, let me just ask Isaac. Would, would Councilmember Guthrie's approach address the issues that myself and Mayor Protem? And uh, others have brought up as a concern?
I think so. I mean, I, I do think, you know, I mean, it's, it's ultimately up to the council. I think uh, Councilmember Guthrie's approach does uh, to his point, sort of changed the loophole. That seems to be a concern for the majority of the council. Um, and I think also adds uh, something to the definition. That came up during deliberation. Um, and uh, I, I think it also addresses sort of some of the conversation. Um, among some of the council members regarding looking at the potential sweet spot, so to speak, that might be between six and ten. So I think something like that is a simplified approach, absolutely. Um, but ultimately, you know, the council has the discretion. Uh, to, to go uh, more extensively now if they want or, or uh, to sort of do this on one track. With a longer term strategy associated with the general plan. I think all, you know, all options are on the table.
Mayor Protem, you're about to speak and I, I'm sorry I cut.
No, okay, um, I think that, well, a couple things. I, I would really be surprised if the public's gonna come out and say. I want to have all these chains in the village. I, I mean, I, you guys can talk about that we might change it, but I can't. I mean, unless someone owns a Supercuts, they might come in or a Starbucks, but I just can't, I mean, the. I mean, we, we know Arroyo Grande, this is why they like the village, because it doesn't look like other places. A perfect example is if you go to Monterey downtown and then you go to Pacific Grove. Pacific Grove does not allow formula businesses. And Monterey does. And it completely has a different flavor. It's just, you, you know, you think, ooh, cute downtown Monterey. There's some historic buildings and then there's Taco Bell and then there's Burger King and then there's Supercuts. And you go to Pacific Grove and it's just this absolutely totally charming um, downtown. So, um, I think, wh- why can't we, why do we have to list? Why can't we just say any business? Why do we have to list these specific businesses that aren't? That, that are, you know, we're defining, we're picking out all these, you know, why can't we just say any, any business? Um, I guess that would be lim, I mean, I was gonna say like doctor's office, but they're not really chains. Well, there is Carbon Health now that. Doc, uh, Medstock and stuff. But why do we have to, because in naming everything. I feel like we're gonna leave something out. We haven't thought of, we're a brand new business that's gonna come up two years from now. Because, you know, some tech company or something different we haven't thought of. So why do we have to, why do we have to list out?
Uh, I, I don't think we have to.
Okay.
I think simplifying it, like I, I think we're all kind of moving towards is gonna help, help a lot to, to broaden the, the definition. I think that one comment that I would make is we, we really need to get into. I think that one comment that I would make is, we, we really need to get into that legal non-conforming issue. So we can drive that home and allow people to have a really clear, uh, understanding of that in case they are in that situation, which, which we will have. And then, um, um, Councilmember Guthrie mentioned a couple holes. You can see, uh, Old City Hall is not covered in there, although it is rented to various types of, uh, offices or real estate. So we would wanna kind of review the parcel layout and make sure that we're covering, uh, every parcel that we feel needs to be covered in the Village Core.
Okay, but, but then what about the, what about the parcels that are blue, that are all right on Branch Street?
Yeah, so we do have a few that are not in the, i- if you were to just limit to Village Core.
Right.
There's the, um, well, the Chambers is one. The Agrarian, uh, appears to be, um, in the, in the blue. Branch Street Deli, and I, I had this discussion with Councilmember Guthrie. Uh, there's a question of whether or not it includes the Branch Street Deli or just the outdoor patio area. And then the area that is sort of, uh, on the north end of Branch, near the, uh, near Traffic Way, actually. Um, so, um, some of those areas are, um, not within the Village Core Downtown. They are in the Village of Mixed Use, so just directing it to the Village Core Downtown would remove those areas from the prohibition on form, formula businesses. We can look at, um, and we will look at the Core Downtown, and tha- all of these uses as part of the general plan and development code update. But again, that's potentially three years away, so.
Oh, but I guess my reservation is, if, if we're going to say that, if Councilmember Guthrie and, we're gonna say that the blue area can be real estate companies. Yeah, go ahead.
I was only advocating that after we complete the general plan.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, I recognize right now, it's, it's,
Okay.
It's too, it's too, it's too messy to do now. But after we complete the general plan, I would want that to be something we would review, whether we would apply this to all of the Village Mixed Use.
Okay, but, okay, so then, right now, though, you're saying, staff is saying that those holes that are blue, that are mixed use, they still would fall in, under the category, because we're not changing anything right now, as far as.
We're leaving it a fight of both Village Core and Village Mixed Use.
Okay.
It's just something we need to fix.
Yeah, okay, alright, um, let's see.
Can I ask a quick question of staff while we're, uh, or do you, did you have a comment?
I have a question.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, Brian, the, the, the biggest gaping hole out there is the Old City Hall. So if we were to, I mean, I, I, I get why we wouldn't wanna go through a giant zoning thing right now, but I want that building to apply. So, how do we do that in a simple and expedient manner?
Now.
That's what she said.
Simple, expedient, and easy. It's in the public facility, um, zone, so.
So it's still, so it's already legal non-conforming? It's not a public facility. It's not, yeah, I don't know if it's even legal, yeah.
Right, but the, the formula business clearly, um, doesn't apply, but it would need to be incorporated into a zone that had that restriction. I think that's probably the only way, because we, I don't.
Right, so you're saying we can or cannot do that? I mean, we do whatever we want.
Zoning change, but you'd have to incorporate it into the Village Core Downtown.
Well, because, so right now, I mean, a Starbucks could locate in that building.
If we rented to them.
Right, I mean, and they might fight that, they might.
Equal access, kinda.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not zoned the way, I mean, it's not restricted right now.
No, the formula business, um, well, so, except, uh, public facility does not allow, um, as far as I know, retail and restaurant uses.
And just to jump in, uh, it sounds like, uh, in talking to, uh, our interim city manager, it sounds like the Old City Hall property is property that's owned by the city. So certainly the city has a lot more discretion over how it's gonna utilize that site, and, and any short-term or long-term lease would come before the council. So I think, uh, I think the rezoning, you know, to, um, what was left unsaid, maybe in Brian's, uh, sort of discussion of that is, it is a little bit more of an involved process. But I do think if there's a concern with the city-owned site, there's a lot more discretion already afforded to the city decision-makers about how it's gonna be utilized, uh, and, and the specific lease or sale or disposition of that land.
Okay.
You can't just list an address, you can't just say VCD.
Well, we'll talk about spot zoning as part of the, uh, the general plan update.
I thought we couldn't talk about spot zoning.
No, no, you can't, it's, it's.
Oh, okay.
It's very illegal.
Okay.
Um, could we circle back to legal non-conforming, cause we've said that, those three words quite often tonight? Does that carry through if a current business owner wants to sell their business?
Does it, i- if they sell their business, does it remain legal non-conforming?
Yes. Maybe she's saying if Lon sells her business to me, and I am operating her business now going forward. Right, is that your question?
Century Twenty-One Hometown Realty, I'm just, they're right there. And I, we're now changing the,
Yeah.
The wording, right, and so now we're legal non-conforming, and I want to sell my business. Does the grandfathered license, I, if you will, go with the business or with me?
Oh, I can, oh, what, uh, Isaac can answer, I, I have a, an answer myself, but I'll see what he has to say first.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think, uh, well, generally, I think we'll talk just in hypotheticals, hypothetical businesses. Um, and also, I think, uh, generally, what, uh, I've seen in jurisdictions, when you talk about sort of, um, phasing out a use, because you're, you're using your police power to rezone or do something different. Uh, generally, um, the non-conforming use, there may be a trigger. For instance, uh, you know, something specific associated with the sale of the property, that's, that's one type of trigger. Or, um, a, a substantial remodel that keeps the same use. So I do feel like, uh, there are options available. I think this, this is certainly something that's, uh, to a point made earlier, sort of about legal non-conforming use. We sometimes have to be kind of fact-specific. So I think, to the extent there's interest from the council, uh, to do something specific for one of those triggers, that's something our office would work with the city manager and the CDD on, to sort of figure out the best, most defensible way to do something, um, uh, if there was interest in sort of transitioning the use after, say, a sale of the property or some sort of disposition of the property from one business to another business owner.
So every, every instance would be taken into consideration separately and on its own merit?
Well, uh, um, I would say there, there would be general rules, absolutely. Um, uh, there just might be facts specific to the site, um, that have to do with maybe the existing lease or deed restrictions on the property, or, or, or any sort of litany of, of factors. But I, I, I wanna clarify and say, you could definitely set a, a consistent trigger. Um, it just might be that there may be a use that has some other, uh, variables associated with it that, um, may apply or take it out of that general trigger.
So if we move forward tonight with a Councilmember Guthrie's very simple, uh, changes, which, thank you, that was like.
Arkham's razor, right?
It's like, right, uh, will, will you do what you need to do then? To put the words in and the trigger points and all of that in with the whole legal non-conforming portion of it?
Or would you just need direction from us that we wanna add a trigger?
I think, uh, both, I think direction would be great. And then, uh, one thing that we could certainly do is if the council was interested in having another study session, like to, with an actual vetted or, you know, vetted ordinance based on the direction before it went the, through the formal adoption process to Planning Commission. Uh, it sounds like there's some direction for community development, you know, reaching out to Sonoma and, and also checking that sweet spot and working with our office on the trigger. So I think that's, that's an option available for the council if that's of interest.
Um, okay, can I ask a, just a process question? Um, I mean, that makes sense, but on the other hand, I don't know that we need another public hearing, because it's gonna have to go through the Planning Commission anyway, and we have the ability to override the Planning Commission. So I'm not sure I would, I, I, I need to understand better what the benefit of bringing it back to us to look at again before it goes to, to planning, it, having given relatively clear direction on a relatively simple change.
Yeah, I, I don't think it needs to come back to the council. I think it, the, we have a, a process path laid out, um, but it's an option, uh, to take into consideration. Um, I know that we would like to get feedback from everybody in the village. Uh, we, Brian has brought it to the Village, uh, Business Group, I think he brought it this morning. Um, that's kind of a closed group, it's not, doesn't represent everybody. So we wanna be able to not, notify all the people that own property, so they can comment and be engaged in the process. And going back to the legal non-conforming.
Uh, before you go on.
Yes.
Did you let them know about the hearing tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so they.
Sure.
They knew.
We do.
Well, uh, I did let them know it was a study session, uh, that there was no action being taken, but that if, if there was direction, we'd come back through the process, planning and city council.
And we'll let them know that, we'll notify them again that it's going through that process.
And I'm speaking with them on the fourteenth, something like that of November.
Great.
So I'll be in front of them as well.
Okay.
Just remember, now there's two, two associations, so.
They're starting to blend a little bit, we see, but we, we're, we're trying to make sure that everybody knows about, uh, all the things that are going on in the village, and especially these type of changes as well.
So I just wanna make sure before it doesn't come back to us ever again. I know what it is, we're, I, I guess the motion will clearly reflect that if that's the way we go. And then are you saying, so it wouldn't be adopted by council, or just go on the consent after Planning Commission?
It's an ordinance.
It would come back to you for final.
Oh, for final, okay, that's, right, okay, so that's, cause you were saying, I guess you were talking about the study session.
Yeah, I didn't think we needed to have another time come before us before it goes to planning again.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we can get this together, and then, yeah.
Poor Councilmember Guthrie's been trying to get it, we're edgy, for like, between all of us.
I just, I just wanted a clarification, are you guys talking about a trigger that allows them to sell their business? Or a trigger that, that they sell their business that's no longer a business?
I, I just want to make it, whatever it is, make it very clear to the business owners and the property owners. Because if I own State Farm and I'm ready to retire, and I'm thinking I can sell it to my neighbor, and now my neighbor can't buy it because the license or the usage dies with me, that's a big deal.
So, so if I can come back to Isaac real quick, so, I, I've, I've seen legally non-conform for quite a while, but the exception would be that, that it went away at the sale of the business. That the, the general rule, as I understand it, would be that you can sell your business, you have a restaurant, as long as it never closes. You, you can definitely sell your restaurant. The, the exception would be that there's some, something special about the business that maybe it's got code issues or something like that, that, so it would be the exception, not the rule, that people could not sell their business because of, because it was legally non-conforming.
Yes, I mean, I think the, the ordinance takes effect, and then it's effective from, from there on out for, for future businesses. Um, the trigger I think we're talking about is, is, um, to the extent the council wants to build in the right for a business to continue that use beyond the existing lease or the existing ownership of the site that would otherwise be non-conforming under a new change in the ordinance.
So that's what I wanna clarify from you guys, are you guys, which, 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 which trigger do you want? Are you trying to get the trigger so they go away, or the trigger so they can continue?
I was with Councilmember George, let's just make it clear. But I also would consider that if I were a business owner, I would consider that a taking. That all of a sudden you just hammered the, the value of my business. So I, I see that, but, um.
I, I don't care which way, I just, we just need to know, so that we, so there's, there's that level of expectation moving forward.
Okay, I'll say here, I care which way.
Yeah.
I, I think we want them to be able to convey their existing business to another.
Be able to transfer it.
So they would be able to transfer, which means we'd probably do nothing, but.
Right, I agree with the mayor, I mean, it starts to sound like a taking.
Right.
But I thought, can I just clarify? I thought when we start talking about the non-conforming businesses, that there was the idea that, uh, for an example, we have too many, uh, national real estate chains. So is the, are we saying that then we do that, and then they, we will not be able to have more national chains? Yes, okay, got it.
I did wanna bring something up that just hit me out of nowhere just now. I have no problem with them being on the second floor. And we have lots of availability on the second floor.
So would you let a gap be on the second floor?
No, but I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, when we come to, uh, uh, a more robust discussion of this, yeah, the, if, if you're talking about, you know, again, right over here, we got State Farm, who's on the second floor, right? Aren't they on the other side of, of Last Chance, up on the?
Oh.
Maybe I've got the wrong.
Well, we may have other second floor.
Mike, your mic.
So, so, and, and we may in the future have other second story. We have a second story going in right next door, so could that be a real estate office? I, I, I personally don't see the exceptions, you know, I, I understand where you're going. They're not, they're not affecting the pedestrian character as, as much.
But they'd be affecting local realtors.
We make an exception for real estate, then are we making real estate and insurance services? Are we making an exception for hair cutting and for, you know?
And, and the other Village Center, is that two-story where it steps up, or is that still a single story?
That one's like eighteen stories somehow. Yeah, okay, well, thank you for, it, it just popped into my head, it didn't even occur to me until one of you were saying, I think you said State Farm, and that triggered that for me, but trigger, sorry. Um, okay, so what is the will of the council? Let's see if we can, um, let's see if.
Can I add one, one thing to the legal non-conforming, uh, discussion? Normally, legal, legal non-conforming, uh, is dealing with the discontinued use of, of a business. That's how it's triggered, and it can be, so we're gonna need to talk about the timeframe of that, three months, one month, um, six months, so the county has a six-month timeframe. Or if the business changes hands, goes to a different use, uh, that, that, um, kinda discontinues that legal non-conforming status.
I'm gonna say, don't we already have that in our code somewhere? Is that wide open? I'm, I, for some reason, six, six months sounds familiar to me, but.
I, I believe that's it, I was, while, while you were talking, I was trying to pull it up, and I had an error go, but.
Unless we're gonna make a different thing for the village, which I wouldn't recommend, then, then I think we're set. Okay, so my motion would be that we would direct staff to bring back the ordinance through the process, uh, sim, eliminating the two exceptions. Um, adding, exploring, coming, fi- finding a, a higher number than six. I've been, I'm gonna say ten, but wha- whatever staff fills in that range, and adding services to the definitions of businesses. I think that's it.
Um, just for clarif, oh, sorry, does it, do you wanna have a second before discussion?
Doesn't matter, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, uh, so for discussion, um, and to Mayor Protem's point, why are we saying anything at all? If we're, are we saying retail and service, are we eliminating something else?
So we can say any formula business?
Yes, period.
Yeah.
Let me ask Isaac, I, does that work?
Yeah, so I think we're adding service, the motion, just to be clear, the motion on the floor is to add services, but also to, to state it applies to any formula business.
I believe that the, the requested change is that we eliminate restaurant and retail and services to just say formula businesses, period.
Clean it.
And does that work as well?
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with that amendment.
Second, second holds, okay, but are we, maybe this will come later. So I just wanna make sure this whole definition from Sonoma, where it talks about the appearance, we're gonna sort of condense that down for our ordinance, so that people don't think you can change your appearance. I think we're, I think we're, we're getting there, because we're saying basically all formula businesses, no matter what business you are, but.
I think we're not, I think we're striking that part.
Yes.
So completely, okay, okay, yeah, alright, good.
So where it says formula business shall mean a business, and then comma, limited to, just remove that limited to. So it's just shall mean a business that is required, dot, dot, dot. Yeah, that works, thank you.
So we get second hold.
Third.
Any other dis.
Fourth.
Alright, hold on a minute, people, alright. Let's do this, let's do this right, um, City, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnet?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Bresson?
Yes. That was an excellent. That was an excellent discussion, everyone, and let that always show that Arkham's razor is usually the right way forward. Nicely done, Mr. Guthrie in corralling a bunch of hens, um, I can say that, but you can't, so. Alright. Council Communications, item thirteen, does anyone have anything to share?
I don't say I have anything to share, but I did wanna ask where we're at with the uh, the short term camping ordinance. Is that coming back to us sometime soon or, short term might be the wrong, you know, with for for overnight camping?
Overnight camping, um, we don't have a a date set right now, but um, we'll start putting it on the. Kind of the forecast uh coming up, so staff is looking into a few kind of options, but um, nothing imminent at this point.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that?
I thought it was just coming back.
I had asked Whitney back in, not very long ago, probably right about when Grover Beach passed theirs. And said, do we need to be doing this, and she said, no, ours covers it fine, and that's the last I heard of that, so I didn't know staff was working on that. Um, is that, what changed that?
The discussion we had was specifically that we were, they were gonna discontinue it and we said, we don't understand why we would discontinue if it's already written.
Oh, you didn't mean camping, you're talking about safe parking.
Yeah, safe park.
Got it, okay, I thought, okay.
Thank you for.
Alright. Thank you, Brian, you understood what he, okay. Okay.
Well, I I I assumed because um, I think Grover Beach calls it overnight camping, um.
Yeah, that wasn't the safe parking ordinance, no, that was a different thing, so, okay, okay. So, safe parking is rolling through, we're, staff is working on camping ordinance, we're not doing anything with that, well, ours is good.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Just to comment really quickly on the safe parking ordinance, we're getting. A lot of feedback from five cities, homeless coalition, from the county, from the city of Slow. That their um, safe parking plans and projects are are not going well. Um, so we're gonna look at that so that we can incorporate that into uh some information for your council to consider.
Okay. Any other council communications? Well, it was a really fun and positive meeting this week, thank you very much, everyone for that, that was great, congratulations, Coach Allen. And we are adjourned, we'll see you in two weeks, everyone.